Councilmember Fine?
Here.
Councilmember Koo?
Here.
Councilmember Scharf?
Here.
Three present.
Thank you very much. All right, first oral communications. This is for all communications, all right? You'll each have three minutes. Jason Matloff, Ellen Hertog, and Becky Epstein.
Hey, guys. Jason Matloff, good to see you. I hope you all had a good Thanksgiving. I just had two brief comments I wanted to make to implore you to consider options and also for the consultant staff. The first thing is I wanted to remind everybody that June 19th, when we had a very thorough six-hour discussion at the council meeting that passed specific resolutions related to rail, including the Churchill-related resolutions, section E of the notes on that discussion that was approved said, "Add to the Churchill Crossing ideas," quote-unquote,[83.54][83.54]"study additional options for addressing traffic in the Embarcadero Road underpass area." So it was specifically mandated by the council to make sure that this whole study process, this whole consulting analytical process includes options in Embarcadero. If we don't do that, then it's a near certainty that we're going to have a cluster, insert your word, of problems because you can't close one intersection without improving another and expect there not to be enormous traffic problems, which relates to my second thing. The last meetings that I've been to, including the CAP and the Rail Committee meeting, the general sense was a sense that doing something at Palo Alto Avenue was not viable because of El Palo Alto and the old bridge. We can't let that be the inertia because if you're talking about the three primary closings, other than University and North Palo Alto, one that would be closed or partially closed, another one that we'd maybe leave at grade or close at Palo Alto, another one that's not going to be improved, that's not viable. We can't come out of this process with that. So I would implore you guys to do as the council passed on June 19th, which is to study Embarcadero improvements to traffic as the legislation mandates, but also do what is ever necessary to investigate alternatives at Palo Alto Avenue because it's just not an option to close that. I mean, I was actually looking for the numbers, but I believe it's the second most trafficked intersection in all of Palo Alto. So please consider those two things. Thank you.
Thank you, Jason. Ellen Hertog, to be followed by Becky Epstein, our last oral communication speaker.
Thank you for all your hard work. I just wanted to bring up again the fact that this corridor is also marked for high-speed rail, and, you know, the options you're picking will have to accommodate that as well. And I haven't heard any type of discussion, what would happen in the future. And we're building for the future and based upon my understanding, I think a trench with a rail on top for freight would also accommodate high-speed rail. So if we keep it below grade, I think that's more of a viable issue for the future than a viaduct or something on a wall where, you know, we'll be doing it all over again once high-speed rail comes. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ellen. And Becky Epstein.
Good afternoon. My reason for coming in this afternoon is to express my concern, if not full-out anxiety, that it's already late November. And I know the timeline. I know where we're trying to get as a community by early 2019, and I don't see it happening if we keep studying the elevated rail options for Charleston and Meadow. What is best for these two crossings is to underground the train. Any other solution is unacceptable in terms of even just looking at visual and noise impacts, and it extends far beyond just the neighborhoods that come up, right up against the train tracks. It's for all of Palo Alto. I encourage the committee to think about takings, not just in the legal sense of eminent domain, but in the common-sense sense about all that will be lost for the homeowners and for the neighborhoods that if they do find themselves one day literally underneath elevated train tracks. I've had a chance to go back to the studied city council meeting that happened in June on the Churchill options, and very studied consideration and deference to all the significant impacts that would face those neighborhoods with certain options. And the impacts in South Palo Alto are no less significant when you consider what those impacts are for the raised options that are still on the table. The time is ticking away. I encourage you in real time to eliminate the elevated rail options for South Palo Alto. This is our opportunity to take it, call it a problem, a challenge, whatever you want. It's our opportunity to do something great for the city, but it's going to require our full political will getting behind an underground solution, and the time to do that is now. Thank you.
Thank you. Adrian?
So just a quick question to staff. One of the speakers mentioned our motion from June about downstream kind of knock-on in Embarcadero impacts. Can staff just give us a quick update about how we're treating that?
Sorry, Councilmember Fine, could you just repeat it?
Sure. So there was a question from a speaker about, you know, if we do close Churchill, we understand there are likely to be impacts in Embarcadero, and in our June meeting, council directed staff to at least evaluate those impacts and how we might mitigate them. I'm just wondering if we can get a quick update on that.
Yeah, Eddie, can I respond to that?
So our traffic analysis is doing counts all around the Churchill area, and the analysis will include an analysis of what happens when you close Churchill and what those mitigations could be to alleviate what those analysis is showing. And so we'll be bringing that back in the January timeframe. And the counts on that, just by way, are happening next week, so.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks very much. We'll now move to our first and only action item. Of course, this is a kind of a pickup meeting after our last one was cut short by a fire alarm, which turned out to be false, luckily. The first and only action item is project schedule and work plan update, including discussion of the idea for freight train on surface and passenger train underground, as I think one of our speakers had just mentioned. So I'll turn this over to staff and consultant to begin our conversation.
All right. Well, thank you. Just want to point out that this is an updated PowerPoint here, just because we did get some dates on some of the meetings, so I wanted to get those included in here so it's not a TBD. So this is a little bit different that it's in the packet. So this is going to be just kind of an overview of the work plan of where we are, what we did in November, and what we plan to do over the next couple of months moving forward. So this is a schedule overview. This is the schedule that's actually posted to the project website, and we are here in the month of November for the Rail Committee. This is Rail Committee Part Two, continuation of the Rail Committee meeting that was started earlier. So November was a very, very busy month. We had a CAP meeting on November 7th where we reviewed alternatives, and Milet will go over here as the next agenda item of what the highlights of the CAP meeting were. We started a Rail Committee meeting on November 14th. We got through a review of the Charleston-Meadow alternatives and an initial review of the matrices, and we are taking the comments we received there and incorporating that so that we can be ready for the community meeting on the 28th. We're here today on the 27th to finish some of the agenda items, going over the work plan, and then kind of giving you a summary of the CAP and the stakeholder meetings. And then next week is the community meeting on November 28th in the evening.
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow, gosh. I was hoping for another week. Tomorrow, excuse me. From 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. in the Mitchell Room, we are going to be going over the Charleston-Meadow alternatives. We have a finance discussion, and we started also with, you know, why are we looking at the projects of the grade separation? From engineering activities, you know, from us, what we're doing is the traffic data collection. We did collect the origin destination information. The traffic counts are actually going to be collected here in November. We did have stakeholder meetings with Santa Clara Valley Water District, Caltrain, safe routes to school, and we reconvened the TAC in November. We are in the process of wrapping up getting the construction costs and issues that will be presented tomorrow. We have consultant, subconsultant onboard, Alta Planning, who has been looking at our exhibits and getting in the pedestrian bike information. We have an evaluation matrix that's been developed. We've received comments on those, and that's getting updated. And we have prepared 3D visuals of, 3D animations of the alternatives for Churchill-Meadow that have been developed so far to date. So, next, excuse me, sorry, Charleston. Sorry about that. December, we, it was suggested that we have reconvene another CAP meeting that's been scheduled now for December 12th. Part of the agenda for the CAP meeting will be to kind of go over what was, what happened in the community meeting, and then look forward to what, you know, grade separation alternative updates we have, as well as giving a traffic and finance update. The City Council meeting, scheduled for December 17th. The brief agenda there is, you know, to go over the community meeting, update on the CAP, TAC, and other interagency activities, as well as give a grade separation update. The engineering activities during December include the traffic data collection, traffic counts at this point were originally scheduled for this week, but we have rain coming, so now they're postponed till next week. The traffic analysis to evaluate the closure at Churchill will begin here in December. We'll be continuing to evaluate construction issues and costs, update alternatives based on the feedback from the community and council, update 3D visuals, and then have follow-on meetings with the stakeholders that include a TAC meeting, Caltrain, and Santa Clara Valley Water District. January is going to be a very busy month. We have a CAP meeting scheduled for early January, January 9th, where the goal is to have another work plan update, but then start to review the Palo Alto Avenue and tunnel within city limits alternatives review, get a traffic analysis for closure, and present that to the CAP for the Churchill closure, and then have a finance update. The Rail Committee meeting, which is to be determined, is, would be giving them an update of what we actually gave at the CAP meeting, something very similar. And we have a community meeting scheduled for the end of January where the agenda is to present the alternatives for Palo Alto Avenue and the tunnel within city limits, as well as the traffic analysis for the closure at Churchill and a finance update. And complementing the work that, of doing all these meetings, is to do this engineering study activities in support of that, which would include the 3D visualization for the other alternatives, finance update, traffic analysis, and then follow-on stakeholder meetings. With the ultimate goal in February is to have a final City Council meeting, the date to be determined, which would be kind of an overall view of what's happened in the community meetings and ask council to weigh in on a preferred alternative. And then the engineering studies and activities would be in preparation for those concluding any of those studies and for the alternatives at date. We've also been asked to look at, you know, the pros and cons of separating freight and Caltrain. And in our request to Caltrain that we have not heard back on is that there is criteria that Caltrain is currently designing to for the Northern Morse section of taking Caltrain from its end into the Transbay Terminal where Caltrain will not have freight railroad on that, and we've requested the design criteria for that, and we're waiting to hear back on that. So that kind of would be our baseline of being able to look at freight separated from the Caltrain. But just kind of a quick kind of pros and cons of, you know, taking Caltrain down in the trench with the idea of leaving freight at the surface level is, you know, the pros are, you know, you have the potential that, you know, the freight grades may not dictate design, and maybe you have a better hope at getting a sign exception for the 2% grade on the Caltrain alignment. And there's the potential for fewer conflicts during the day for, because freight trains run at night, and they only, I think they operate just a couple freights, you know, during the middle of the night. However, the cons are, you know, you're going to have higher maintenance cost because you're going to be maintaining two separate railroads. You still have safety issues because you will have at-grade crossings. The permanent freight track, you know, will be, probably have an alignment where the, what we showed on what we called the shoe fly temporary. And so we would lose right-turn pockets along Alma Street, so you would restrict some of your movements on Alma Street because now you'd have the freight at that location with the train, the Caltrain in the trench. You still require a grade separation, excuse me, a design criteria exception for the Caltrain trains because the profile that we have so far evaluated so far to date is you have to have at least a 2%, if not greater, profile to make the trench work within the constraints of, between Charleston and Meadow. And that the final thing is freight trains will continue to be required to sound their horns at Charleston and Meadow at-grade crossings because they are not grade separated, and so you will have, continue to have horn nose at night when the ambient noise is much lower, so horn noise is more, I guess, defined, so to speak. And I just wanted to point out the figure down below that I have in this slide here is actually kind of giving you an idea. This is Alameda Trench down in Compton, California, where they have two freight railroad tracks in a trench, and they have a surface freight track above surface. So you see that they have something similar to what I think the community has been envisioning here, but you would, that's just kind of an example of where something like this has happened. And with that, I'll open up to questions, comments.
All right, we have a couple of public speakers. I'm happy to go straight to the two public speakers unless colleagues have quick questions to ask first. Okay, Nadia Nyak, to be followed by Roland LeBrenne. And if you want to speak to this item, please put in your card before Nadia is done talking. We'll also do a round of public comment after this as well.
Hi, thanks. So first, before we get into the trench or the freightless tunnel issue, at the last meeting, we also missed the chance to hear from the Sacramento lobbyist. I know he was here. I got to meet him very briefly. I see that there's a letter on the back table, which I think is great, but we should make that accessible online. It's not part of the agenda packet, and you wouldn't see it otherwise, which leads me to, and I know I've discussed with Seth Robb, and I know that we have severe staffing issues, but none of the comments that are being sent in ahead of time are making it into the agenda packets or are available for others to see online. So, for example, I sent in lengthy comments prior to the last meeting. It wasn't part of this agenda packet, and if you go through all of our previous rail meetings, you can't see any of the comments that ever get sent in. For those in the audience, the trick is to send it to the entire City Council web address instead of just the people on Rail Committee because that forces it to at least get into the public packet for the City Council meetings, which then makes it searchable on the Internet. But there's got to be a better way to do this, and I just think it's important that we have those. In terms of the single-track freight, so, sorry, freight would be single-tracked. That's an important thing to note. So you could potentially, within the right-of-way, fit a trench and a single track of freight. I will dig up a picture. This already exists over in Milpitas, where you've got Bart in a trench and the, I think it's the BNSF immediately adjacent, all within the right-of-way. So if you can imagine our corridor, freight stays within the right-of-way where our train tracks are now, and the trench moves a little bit over, but hopefully doesn't encroach onto Alma. But it should not impede turning movements because it's on the inside part of the line, if that makes sense. It's hard to just talk about without a picture. Caltrain at 2% is not an issue. High-speed trains can travel significantly, so we need a design exception based on the Caltrain standards right now that have Caltrain and freight. Once we get the design standards for the San Francisco tunnels, you should see that that 2% thing goes away, so that shouldn't be an issue. Freight noise is dependent, so the horn noise that she discussed when freight trains go by, you can make quiet zones, and the way to make quiet zones is to have quad gates. That is true today. It would also be true with freight. The places where you'd actually have to still sound a horn when a freight is, a train is coming of any kind is at the station to kind of force people to move back from the tracks in case a train is going through and passing through. So that would be the issue. I'll have more, once I get to hear more of your discussion, I can maybe answer some questions. Thanks.
Roland LeBrenne? And then we, one more got in there, probably Putkar.
Thank you. So first of all, thank you for, Councilmember Fine, for listening to your constituents and putting this option back on the table. But what I want to talk about is something slightly different, which is the way we did this in London.
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead. You can start over. Please.
Okay. So the way we did it in London, we had a high-speed line, then we got really close within 12 miles, and we had the local trains, which stopped at all the stations, and the high-speed line just went underground. And my proposal for Caltrain in this area of the peninsula is similar, but the tunnel has to be longer. The tunnel essentially starts just north of San Antonio, and it emerges just south of Redwood Junction, so it's approximately eight miles. The only infrastructure that you need in between there is three van chaps, so you have to figure out where they're going to go. But otherwise, there's absolutely no surface impact, so what does that buy you? Well, first of all, it substantially lowers your costs because if you look at, and you actually need your consultant to give you a breakdown, this $4 billion includes underground stations. That's what's expensive. Tunnels are not expensive. Underground stations are extremely expensive. In San Francisco's case, the tunnel is 1.7 miles long. Well, the Central Subway, the tunnel contract for 1.7 miles was $200 million. So how did they end up quoting them $6 billion? Well, there is a station, and God knows what there is. They're actually trying to put three tracks, and so it just gets ridiculous. So please ask your consultant to give you a breakdown of how much a tunnel would cost and how much the station would cost. Now, at that point in time, you can start thinking like London, and the trains that stop continue to use the surface, so there's no changes. And Nadia correctly pointed out, train hauls are not an issue because once you've got quad gates, you're going to have quiet zones. Now, let me just wrap up here with some technical, okay, now, advantages of funding. Potentially, since if you keep two tracks at grade and you have a tunnel, you're going to substantially be increasing the capacity of the corridor. At that point in time, the high-speed rail authority will be interested in investing in that tunnel, potentially up to half a billion dollars. And the reason they would do that, well, first of all, they would be able to go right through Palo Alto without any conflict with anything else, but also they'd be able to do so at much higher speeds, up to 150 miles an hour, and there would be absolutely no impact on the residents of Palo Alto. And then just one last point in terms of constraints. You need a minimum of 80 feet of right-of-way to be able to do this. I can show it looks like in London. Ideally, you want 100 feet, then you have 100 feet just south of Redwood Junction. Thank you.
Thank you, Ron. How are you, Putkar?
Thanks, Cory. Eddie, can I ask you a favor? Can you pull up the last slide? Yeah. Okay, so on the cons, right? So I get the pros. On the cons, see, and I live, and it's my personal opinion only, and I live right by the tracks. So the last one where the freight trains continue to sound the horns, from my point of view, not a big deal. I'm used to it. There's only three horns, you know, during the day, maybe two during the day, one at night, so I would eliminate that from, again, my point of, my personal point of view. So Caltrain, so number four is actually not a con because, I mean, it's highly likely that Caltrain will agree to a 2% grade if freight is not shedding the tracks. So I don't know why point number four is even there. Point number three is a big one. So I think we need details on where will this loss, permanent loss of turning lanes be? That's a fairly big one. And the first one is not up to me. The second one, we're sort of used to. So that brings us down to only one, which is the turning lanes. That's my whole point.
Okay. Thank you very much. All right. Coming back to the committee, Adrian or Lydia? Any comments, questions, thoughts? Yeah, Lydia, please.
So Eddie, on that slide that Parag had up, the pros and cons, the high-maintenance cost to maintain separate railroads, who is the person, who is the entity that's maintaining the railroads?
I think that's something that would need to be negotiated, or, you know, on that one, I couldn't say it. But, you know, maintaining two railroads, there is a real cost of maintaining two railroads. We didn't evaluate, this was just a, you know, a quick list of looking at, you know, this scenario because this is not one of the options that's actually current in our scope of services, but.
Oh, so you need to discover more to research more on it.
Yeah, but just from a high level, looking at, you know, you're putting, what you're putting into the trench will actually have higher maintenance costs than what there is today, and then now you're maintaining three railroad tracks as opposed to two.
Someone will be maintaining. Someone will be maintaining. We don't quite know who will be right now. At this point, Caltrain is the one who's maintaining that corridor, their rail corridor, right? Not so much us.
That's correct. That's my understanding.
Okay. With regards to the, to the work plan, I see that you added another CAP meeting in here for the, after the community meeting in November. Would it be, would it be something that we should also consider, that we should have a CAP meeting after the, before the, well, you have one in December, but I was thinking, you know, right before the February, the February meetings? Because that's really coming up to the end of things, and we're going to want the CAP Committee to kind of review the entire picture so that, so that they can make recommendations before it comes to council or to the Rail Committee.
Thank you, Councilmember Koo. That might be a possibility if the CAP, the CAP requested to have an additional meeting in December. They're very engaged and very helpful, so we're happy to accommodate that. They meet again in January, if it makes sense, and it would be helpful for the process to have another meeting. We'll take a look at that, see if we can make that work. Wouldn't be opposed to it.
Yeah, because, yes.
Sorry, I was just going to add, if you don't mind, that I think we're actually reaching something of a rhythm here with the CAP, with the Rail Committee, and ultimately leading to council discussions. So this is an ongoing conversation we're having with our consultant team, just to make sure that both in terms of the sequence of the work and ultimately our contract will accommodate that, but we'll discuss that and make sure that it works. I do think that the engagement we've got with the CAP has been really productive, and I think that the committee's certainly reflected that as well. Rail Committee has reflected that as well, so we want to do whatever we can to support keeping that rhythm going.
Yeah, I mean, so I want to thank the CAP Committee and for staff, to staff also. I mean, I do really find that committee very effective in vetting everything out, reaching out to the community, and really looking at everything. So I appreciate all their inputs into this and all their guidance also. On another note, I was just wondering, TAC, the T-A-C, so I know that you're reconvening all of them. Do you have an idea when, in December? I mean, we're pretty much close to the end of November, so do you have an idea when they are going to be meeting? And do we get a calendar, agenda of what they're going to be discussing? It's not open to a public. I know there's three questions in there. I'm sorry. When are they going to be meeting in December? Do we get to see an agenda, and also is it open to a public?
The next TAC meeting is convening on December 10th in the morning, 10:30. The general agenda is looking at technical issues for, you know, what we're trying to understand is, you know, as we look at alternatives, if they have any concerns or technical issues that they can give us input on, for instance, like creeks, you know, design criterias, that kind of information. So we're really looking for technical advice. And then the third one I want to answer.
Yeah, certainly we can share the agenda of what's going to be discussed. I think in the past, we haven't had this as a public meeting. It's more of a sort of, it's more like a staff meeting, sitting around looking at plans. So the plan is not to have it as an open meeting at this time.
Do you have a liaison from the CAP that goes to this? A liaison? A liaison person from the CAP?
I don't believe so.
We do not. We do not. And perhaps just to set a little bit of expectations on that TAC meeting and others, please feel free to weigh in, but I'll give you my own personal perspective on how those work. You know, there really are, it's not a committee, per se. It really is, as much as anything else, just a time to have the opportunity to debrief on the status of the work with the agencies, one place, one time, that the agencies can come together. Now, the reality is, I think that it can be hit and miss in terms of attendance, and it's really not either a consensus building, or we're not going to get a recommendation out of the group, because it's not structured that way. And quite frankly, putting ourselves in the shoes of any of the other agencies, they're not going to want to weigh in on what's good or bad for Palo Alto. They will simply, as Eddie described it, give us their technical input on the issues they see as needing to be addressed in order for us to have, again, advancing for Palo Alto, our own decision-making. So again, just to kind of set expectations, it's really not, not like this. It's not where there are motions and actions that come out of the discussion, or even, quite frankly, like the CAP meeting, where we get the input from different perspectives that then inform other perspectives. It really is just one place that everyone can talk about the same topic at the same time. And also does not replace the one-on-one meetings that our consulting team is having with individual agencies in order to get more detailed back and forth on issues of concern.
So the TAC won't be kind of, so when you, so for example, you mentioned the creeks, to get advice on how to go around it or underneath it, would you be bringing up the McDonald Report, where they showed that they were able to have a tunnel that went underneath the creek? Are those some of the things that you're going to be discussing and looking through, comparing and...
So that probably wouldn't be an in-depth thing with the TAC. It would probably be, as Ed mentioned, an in-depth, one-on-one, back, going back with Santa Clara Valley Water District. I think at the last rail committee meeting, the letter from Santa Clara Valley Water was shared, and we're taking that into account and looking at that. It's a fairly complex engineering issue, and so we're looking at that, and we would go back to Santa Clara Valley and say, are these solutions, you know, do they have merit? And then come back and present that at that time.
And which entity, which committee do you go to in order to, like, just to find out what the other city is doing, and how can we kind of work with them in order to make sure we all achieve something that is viable for the future? Which committee would that be?
That's a good question. There's actually not a committee, per se, for that. One of the venues where those kinds of issues can be discussed is with Caltrain. Either at, well, primarily either the Local Policymakers Group, or there's a staff-level group that they pull together. But again, my understanding, and I've never attended that staff meeting, that they don't really get into specifics among the agencies. We are beginning to have more specific discussions with VTA in the context of the Measure B funds and what the strategies will be for delivering that. And I'll speak to that a bit when we get to the inter-agencies activities, but that's kind of the lay of the land. And at the same time, sorry, same, same, last comment applies. Doesn't prevent us from having one-on-one discussions, such as we are talking with Mountain View and Sunnyvale about some of their issues, but haven't really gotten very deeply in some of the technical, you know, say, Water District or other specifics.
One last thing. Yesterday, when Assemblymember Mark Berman was here, and he spoke about the 25th Avenue portion where they receive, in San Mateo, where they receive funding from HS, High-Speed Rail.
High-Speed Rail, yes.
Can you kind of, is that something that you know about, that we, you might kind of brief us on, on that funding, and whether we can also get some money from there?
I think we can try to pull together some information. I'm not sure we've got much kind of official information. I do recall talking to High-Speed Rail staff about it back more than a year ago. So we'll pull together information we can on the package. I do recall very specifically that in communication I had with Ben Tripolis, who was High-Speed Rail staff at the time, he was particularly noting the fact that they were doing passing tracks as a part...
They're doing what?
Passing tracks, actually providing additional width and capacity for High-Speed Rail as a part of that project. So that was one of the key pieces of rationale for High-Speed Rail putting significant funding into the project.
Thank you.
Adrian?
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation and quick update. Few comments. One, if we could please put this updated work plan, or at least the one you presented and the letter here up on the website, I think that's helpful. Councilmember Koo asked about maintenance costs, and it occurred to me it probably would be helpful for us to kind of evaluate, what are our current maintenance costs? Are we actually doing any maintenance currently? What does it cost the city? And what would future proposed maintenance costs be on various options? I know Councilmember Sharp brought that up, I guess, last week on the trench options. So it would be nice to kind of get that cut on the various options. Clarifying question on today's item. Is the freight on surface and trench options, is that being considered currently? Or is that something we're going to have to recommend to the council?
It's not currently an alternative. What our consultant team has done for today is try to identify some of the initial issues that would need to be considered in order to further evaluate that option, but at this point, it's not in scope.
Okay. So it'll take a motion for us to do that, just to signal that to my colleagues. The final things, I guess it's kind of just a set of questions based on what Mr. Lebrun said. On the tunnel finance options, when this comes to this committee and the public, it would be helpful to have kind of a more granular breakdown of the tunnel finance. What are the different options? I think the other thing that I've been seeing is, as we talk to people in the public about the tunnel, it is obviously a very appealing option, but I find myself often reiterating what we've kind of identified as some of the fatal flaws. And that's not to say it's not an option, but I think we should be very upfront about those and kind of flush them each out. And then finally, I don't want to introduce anything new, but I know we've mainly talked about a tunnel just here in Palo Alto, and we should either open up or close off the issue of a more regional tunnel, right? Whether there is a possibility of Mountain View to Redwood City. If that's a possibility, let's talk about it. If not, let's understand why. I think those are my comments for now.
Yeah, and I think, actually, on that last point, I think the reason why our current tunnel consideration is within the city borders of Palo Alto is because it didn't look like we were going to be able to team up with our partners at both ends. I mean, I know there, I think that there is at least some hope that as Caltrain is going through their business plan, and we start to look at the scale of the regional challenge, perhaps some other larger solution is available, but I still think it's important that we continue to operate under at least some sense of urgency to have our own resolution in case those dream scenarios don't pan out, which is pretty likely. The proposal as very, you know, I appreciate that it's very preliminarily brought to us, this idea of doing passenger underground and leaving freight at the surface. What I was envisioning was, and maybe some other members of the public, and maybe there's a variety of ideas about how it would work, I was thinking that people were talking more about a tunnel rather than a trench, so that the freight could potentially be directly overhead, and a tunnel could then go underneath the creeks as opposed to a trench. And people may have different concepts for how this would work. I do think it's worth getting more information about. I do think we should probably have a motion to recommend that council direct the consulting team and staff to dig into this a little bit more. You know, that's just kind of where I'm at right now.
You know, if I could give you a reaction to that, and perhaps on behalf of the consultant team, we're not exactly sure what the concept is. And it would be helpful to have some clarity on that. I think Councilmember Fine's comments on, you know, the dilemma we have on what is potentially feasible in terms of foreseeable resources and options that the consultant team is continuing to evaluate is one, excuse the pun, track. Then the other, in terms of, as I've started to refer to it, the game-changing options that would require resources beyond the ones that, you know, would necessarily be under the city's either control or immediate influence. If this were a tunnel as a part of that, this concept, I'm not sure which category puts it on. I suspect it does put it more in the game-changing category. And so our ability to do a very in-depth analysis of that option may be, I'll say, questionable without a significant investment of additional resources into the evaluation itself. And offer, you know, any others to comment if I'm off-base.
And so, I want to make sure I'm understanding what you're saying. When you say additional resources, I think you're, you mean additional resources provided by the council to pay for the consulting work?
Correct.
Right, okay.
Correct. And at this point, we do have, within scope, the tunnel itself, and so we do, and again, this is within the city limits alternative, and I think we expect to bring that back within the next month or so. And so that might be helpful to inform some of the issues associated with the tunnel in and of itself, and then the add-on, so to speak, of, or whatever variation or difference might exist with freight at the surface. I think we might be in a better position to talk about what some of those differences might be, rather than perhaps at this point, add another alternative, which may, quite frankly, range a whole other set of issues that would need to be evaluated independently.
So, you know, as we're looking at this idea of doing a separated freight from passenger, a very early concept, were you looking at it at just South Palo Alto? Were you looking at it as a citywide option? Or is that one of the questions you're looking to us for clarity about?
I think the last. Yes.
It was, sorry. It was just a general question, you know, of what can we do if we separate freight from Caltrain? And it wasn't really associated with any one alternative. It was just a more of that broad question is the way that we had heard it.
So I think the discussion we've had, at least here and from the public, is large that it would be some kind of, how do you say, this hybrid of the trench option in South Palo Alto, which is we have, you know, our electrified trench for passenger rail, and the freight remains at surface.
Yeah, although I think there's some interest as well in doing an actual tunnel as well. All right, you know, the tunnel, as we've been looking at, for instance, in South Palo Alto, as we've been looking at doing an underground option potentially for South Palo Alto, we were talking about doing a trench or a tunnel, and it looked like the trench would be easier than a tunnel. And part of the reason for that is, you know, the constraints that are associated with freight. But if you remove those constraints, which are associated with freight, from the underground option in South Palo Alto, then the possibility of a tunnel may be more feasible. And so I think that's part of what we've been trying to understand and to evaluate, right? For instance, the ventilation associated with diesel freight is not necessary with electric passengers. The access requirements for freight are different than the access requirements. And then the grade, right? You can go down and back up more steeply if it's just electric passenger than if it's, than if it's passenger and freight. And so again, you know, at least for South Palo Alto, if not for the citywide option, you know, I think that if it's just a passenger line, then tunnels, not just trench, not just undergrounding, but an actual tunnel, might be more feasible. And that's what I'm still interested in learning more about. I do think that that's something where we would want to make a motion to the council to discuss it as a whole, and perhaps allocate the resources necessary, you know, wherever it's coming from, whether it's coming from council contingency or whatever, but that we would want to allocate the resources necessary to dig into, no pun intended, to dig into going down that track a little bit further. So, yeah, I'm interested in doing that. Before I make a motion, just kind of want to hear where my colleagues are on the committee, just to see if we want to learn a little bit more about that.
I'm just trying to understand your looks up here on staff. And I can understand why. You know, it is later in the game. We have been narrowing things down, and this is kind of a late-breaking option. And at some point, you know, it is the responsible thing for us to say, hey, we've evaluated the options we have, we've done our work on them, we've worked them up, we've evaluated them in our matrix and with the community. And we could get into some bad pattern of just adding options, you know, all the way to the finish line. So I understand that. I guess I just want to tease this out a little bit more, because we certainly do have folks in the community who think this is a viable option. You know, I did see the pros and cons slide, but it's such, it's so high-level, it's hard for us to make that choice here. So I know I'm neither asking a question nor really making a point, but that's where I am right now.
If it's helpful, you know, perhaps, this is, again, always breaking new ground with the rail committee here, we might even want to invite some comments from the public in terms of the concept as they envision it, that could help inform our own understanding. I will, at the risk of getting a little wonky here, want to perhaps dive a little deeper in terms of what some of the issues might be, and, you know, certainly invite, again, Eddie, or I'm allowed to weigh in, and Rob, obviously, as well. What, as I envision or think about this concept of keeping freight at grade, there are a few issues at play. One is certainly the, who owns the property? And so, you know, ultimately, this question of maintenance is a component of that. The fact that, or presuming that the JPB continues to own the property, does raise the question of why would they be interested in having sort of the downside of both scenarios? One is that, I think, as we've talked about a tunnel, part of the attraction there is to be able to use the surface right-of-way for other purposes. And at least in the foreseeable future, that would not be possible with freight rail at surface. So perhaps it's, again, positioning for a future in which there is no freight rail, but I think we should be explicit about, if that's the assumption, then that's a future that is currently not in front of us. Another issue that we've talked some about, but it's hard to put on a slide, is the fact that when you separate, if you think about the northern end and the southern end of where we have rail at two levels, how you do that separation gets pretty complicated, and needing to basically have them separate horizontally before they then come back at vertically, at least potentially that would be the case, which might require significantly wider right-of-way than we currently have, depending on how that actually plays out. So I think those are the kinds of things that would need to be looked at, and again, in the context of both the creeks, as well as, you know, again, our right-of-way concerns and not wanting to certainly create a situation in which, when going longitudinally along a rail line, when you have to go wider, it goes for a very long way, especially in the context of high-speed rail, where their operating speeds are high, and therefore require very long distances in order to make small transitions horizontally and vertically as well to a certain extent, but certainly horizontally. So it, before you know it, you move in a, this will be way off, so I shouldn't even hazard, but just to illustrate the point, to make a, say, a 20-foot horizontal lateral move, you probably need to go a few hundred feet or maybe thousand feet long, along a rail line. So those are the kinds of issues that, if we were to go look more deeply into it, I suspect we'll find that the impacts are much more significant and serious than may initially be assumed.
I think he touched on some of the high-level issues of horizontal separation and vertical separation, and the geometry associated with that that makes it complicated, but it'd have to be looked at a little more deeply. This was just a flash and blush at, you know, kind of what the, you know, issues would be.
Well, I feel like it's a little early to say that this is something we can do, and it's a little early to say this is something we shouldn't look into. And I think that Adrian's right to point out that we should be cautious about, you know, we don't want to get into a pattern of every meeting throwing out a new alternative. I don't think we've done that. I think we've been pretty judicious about that. I do think that this is an interesting one. I'm interested in learning more about it. I think a lot of people in the community are. So I'll make a... So I'll make a motion that we recommend to the council to direct staff and consulting team to further explore a freight on-surface and passenger-train underground alternative.
Second. Second.
Okay. I don't think I need to speak to it a lot right now. Do you want to speak to it? And I think we might have some additional public speakers as well.
Just very quickly, I think one of the members of the public, Helen Hartog, mentioned we're building for the future, and, you know, capacity is going to continue to go up on the train. Given Stanford's expansions, our city growth itself, the growth is going to go tremendously. And, and the only way to get people, commuters and people from one place to another for work, as a, to provide an option is going to be, is going to need to be vetted out very carefully. And I think that looking at options right now, we're still, you know, we're, we're in a tight timeline, but I don't think that we should leave anything off the table and not look at it. And if this is one way to, to address the 2% grade issue, then this is something that we really should explore. So, I second that.
Thank you. And I will add, since Assistant CEO Manager pointed it out, I think part of the thinking here is that, given there's greater, there's a greater than 0% chance that there will be less or eliminated freight in the future in our portion of the corridor, designing for something that can carry freight, something really substantial like an underground trench or tunnel, might be really over-engineering and spending a lot more money than we need to. And that's part of why I think, excuse me, why this might be an alternative, where we envisioned is something that could be perpetual with, you know, you know, long-term freight and passenger separated, but then would provide the alternative for removing the freight line in the future if freight is no longer utilized on our portion of the corridor, and then we would just, just be left with the passenger line. So, again, part of the things to, to think about as we move forward a little bit more. We do have two people who'd like to speak, Adrian.
Can you just clarify if the motion is, you said underground, I think. Are you intending, well, so that, we have a little lack of clarity here, is it a tunnel with freight at surface, or is it a trench with freight at surface? Those are big differences.
Right. And so, my preference is the tunnel. If we need to clarify for the work that staff and consulting team need to do, then I would say change underground to tunnel.
So, I don't, I don't think we should be making this decision based on preferences.
Right, but that, that's why I left it intentionally open-ended, so that we can look into, into both of those. And we could specify an underground trench or tunnel. This is what we did originally.
So we're adding two new options?
This is actually what we did with the South Palo Alto trench or tunnel option, that we considered that one option, had that listed previously.
Does that make sense to you guys, I guess? If we're saying, I mean, the, the main factor here is we're leaving the freight, you know, on the surface, one track, and tunneling or trenching the passenger electric below? I mean, is that a workable mandate?
From an engineering standpoint, it's, you know, we run the profiles, you know, whether it's a tunnel or a trench. So it's, so the short answer is, it's, you know, we run the numbers.
Well, then perhaps from a project management perspective, it would be, our, our follow-up would be to talk to AECOM about a scope for the evaluation that would be needed and budget associated with that, and come back to the council with that.
Yeah, so I, I think that, that would be helpful, actually. And Rob, I see you want to talk.
Yeah, just that, I think building off what Ed Chicago said a little earlier, I think it would be easier for us on sort of the budget and schedule and timeline if it was tied to an alternative that was still on the table. So we, we still have the tunnel option that's being studied, and they're doing the engineering for that. If it's a variation of that with freight on the surface, I think might be a simpler way to look at it.
Yeah, sure. And I guess it's like the, the prime version of, you know, a tunnel or trench in South Palo Alto, if that makes sense.
Would we need to change the motion to accommodate that, or can you work out that by the time you bring it back to council? And in your staff report and recommend, and work up when it comes to council, include that explanation?
I think we can work that out and bring it back for the December 17th meeting.
Okay. Great. Okay, we do have a couple of people, or a few people who'd like to speak before we vote on anything. So our first speaker is Nadia Nai, to be followed by Roland Lebrun, and then Phil Burton, Amy Neff, and Parag again.
Thanks. I'm going to try to stick to what I have written so I remember to say everything. So first off, as a CAP member, I just wanted to request that we try to get information to us before the CAP meeting, so we can read them prior to the CAP meeting. Part of the problem that we're having is that we're being presented with all this great information, but we have to read and respond and react all in the same meeting, and that makes it really hard. So to the extent that we could get stuff ahead of time, that would make us a lot more efficient and effective. Kind of the same comment for today, the new updated presentation shows the pros and cons of, you know, the response essentially to what was card suggestion. It's very difficult to do that in this meeting. I did want to clarify, the idea is a tunnel with freight on the surface, and I will go into why. And for those of you in the audience, again, because my comments were not included in part of the packet, I sent the city council and the staff a four-page discussion about why this should be considered. The reason is that, and before I go into it, I should say that we have a potentially critical flaw in the existing alternatives, which is that the trenches that we're looking at, we still have not heard from AECOM how they plan on dealing with the trenches and the creeks, and how that differs from what Mont McDonald had said back in the day. And so my concern is, we have a community meeting tomorrow where we're going to show a video that shows trench, and we may not be able to do that because of the creeks. And so this, the reason the tunnel is, and with freight at the surface is a potential alternative, is because it helps get under those creeks, and because it does not include freight, it can dive under those creeks, and that's an important distinction. So there is no benefit to having a trench and freight at the surface. It's all about having the tunnel with freight at the surface. I just want to clarify that. Also, the right-of-way is 150 feet near San Antonio Road. It is much larger than it is elsewhere. So people who live closer to Churchill might think, well, there's no room. If you look down in South Palo Alto, there's actually a lot of space. So in 2014, Hatch-Mott did a study for a trench for Meadow and Charleston, and put the cost at roughly $488 million. It was a ballpark. Also in 2014, the Central Subway Project in San Francisco completed a 1.7-mile dual-bore subway tunnel using two boring machines, 20.7 feet in diameter. The cost to complete the project was $234 million, okay? For reference, the distance from Loma Verde to San Antonio is 1.6 miles. Palo Alto might have other costs, but those tunnels were done in downtown San Francisco in an urban setting, under an active BART line. They went through various types of soil, and the TBMs had to navigate steep interning alignments and the fact that there's other skyscrapers in the area. It cannot be more expensive to tunnel in downtown San Francisco under an active BART line than it is to tunnel in our right-of-way, given the space that we have and the development that we have, or actually don't have on the right-of-way. There's, freight would not be an issue, the percent grade that we would have would be more flexible because freight stays at the surface. Traffic during construction would be minimally disrupted. Tunnels and stations are expensive. The reason the citywide tunnel is so expensive is because we have to have a station and a tunnel going through Cal Ave. This is much cheaper because you're not dealing with stations. That is the big benefit. It's also much faster to build, and the construction time is dramatically reduced. So one of the big costs is how long does everything have to be shut down for, how many roads are impacted? You would not be impacting anything. You could potentially be tunneling, and besides where the tunnel boring machine enters and exits, everything else would be operating on the surface, cars would be going, and you wouldn't have any of those disruptions. You would go under the utilities, a big cost of replacement, or cost of moving things with the trench relates to utility relocation. Again, you're going under the creeks, you're not impacting the streets. You could have the equivalent of a shoe fly near the portal where the tunnel boring machine comes in, but those are the only places where you'd need a shoe fly. You wouldn't need it the entire length of the right-of-way. And again, it's a single track of freight, and to Councilmember Warback's point, there's a question about whether, if the Dunbarton Rail Project is completed, which Facebook is pursuing, whether freight actually will turn off of the right-of-way at Redwood City and not come down on the peninsula again. So it's a very important thing to consider. We're going to need to quantify ongoing maintenance costs, but if we're looking at alternatives, it seems to me that the trench, the, the hybrid option that we have now is actually kind of the worst of all worlds for Palo Altons, and this would be a much better option. Thank you.
Thank you. Roland, to be followed by Phil Burton and Amy Neff.
Well, I'm pretty much going to second everything that Nadia just said. Let me focus a couple of other points. The TAC, I have actually, one day, two years ago, I was accidentally invited to a TAC, a high-speed rail TAC. It was fascinating. The amount of misinformation these consultants were spreading out was staggering. And then what happens afterwards is that the cities, who basically know nothing about this, and relying on the input from these people to make decisions, that then pass on to council, just take the information and, and pass it on, and then you end up with what's going on right now with a high-speed rail in Central Valley, with this massive disaster, and the state auditor getting all over it and saying, what happened here? But same thing. I mean, it was basic, like platform lengths, platform heights, clueless. But anyway, give you a typical example on the information you just gave you just now, a high-speed rail, it's true, needs a lot longer because got much higher speed to diverge. Well, guess how it works in London? She started off with two tracks, so tunnel portal, high-speed rail goes straight down the middle at 150 miles an hour. There was no diverging. And what happened is that the freight and the local trains, who were on the outside tracks, went like this, and slowly, maybe like our train, 70, 80 miles an hour, and within quarter of a mile, they were back above the tunnel and they carried on on two tracks. Now, and this is the reason, and Nadia touched on this, this is the reason why I selected those two allocations, north of San Antonio and south of Redwood Junction, is because we have, we currently have the right-of-way to do this, without having impacts on, you know, adjacent properties, or maybe knocking out the Layton Alma or whatever with shoe flies and gunners, what else? This is why I ended up with that particular alignment. Now, the point earlier about following San Francisco for design standards, well, yesterday, the TJPA released the final supplemental AIR for downtown extension. And you can go and look at that trench design, you can see what an underground station at Thousand looks like, and, you know, good luck with that. And I'll give you a couple caveats. First of all, the Board of Supervisors have pulled off all the funding for 30% design, because they basically have had enough of this. And if you go and look at tomorrow morning's agenda for MTC, and look at the regional measure three funding, the downtown section no longer have a lead agency. There's no lead agency for downtown extension. Concluding, comment that Assemblyman Berman made, I'm very surprised, because I've been fighting with Caltrain for at least three years now to have passing tracks at 25th Avenue, and they're saying no, they just, no intention of doing it. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Phil Burton, to be followed by Amy Neff, and our last speaker, Parag Padkar.
So I just want to say that I'm very pleased to hear about the alternative of rail on-surface and passenger tunneling. We have the same convenient fact of a community-wide meeting tomorrow, and I can tell you from everything I'm hearing, people are really getting upset about the lack of clarity. And so if we are introducing a new alternative, I think it behooves us to ask the engineering consultants to do whatever it takes as an Herculean effort to come up with some kind of even modestly effective timeline, because we're saying, in effect, we're going to put off the decision that we originally told you we were going to take in early 2019. We're going to put that off by some number of months, but we hope we'll have a better set of alternatives. We need to be very clear about that, and also to have some kind of commitment that we're not going to keep introducing additional alternatives at the last minute. My own suspicion is that we're kind of out of alternatives as ideas. Thank you.
Thank you. Amy Neff, to be followed by Parag Padkar.
Thank you. I, I just want to say quickly, yeah, I agree that we were talking about tunnel underneath and not trench and freight above, and I'm actually surprised that this is coming up as, this is the first time we've heard it, because we've been discussing this off and on since probably July, so it's, it's shocking that here we are almost December, and everybody is saying, we've never heard this before. So I'd just like to put that out. And then the other thing is, I find it really upsetting that it's pretty clear that our consultant is, has a preference for what direction we take, and I would like to not have that manipulation, and it doesn't seem right, so, thank you.
Thanks again, Corey. So after the discussion, I'm a little confused again. So I had a couple of questions about the motion that city council will take up at their next meeting. I'm assuming this is for South Palo Alto only, and I'm assuming that the option includes the study of both tunnel and trench. And correct me if I'm wrong. And like Eddie, thanks for bringing up the Compton comparison. So if the Compton trench is the precedent we are talking about, can we at the next meeting get an idea of the cost, of what it costed the guys in Compton to build that trench? And other parameters like, you know, the distance, and if it had the same obstacles that we face here with the creeks and the 2% grade? But I think that's for the comparison sake, but the bigger question is, I mean, what is the motion? I mean, how clearly defined is the motion? Is it for South Palo Alto only? And secondly, does it include a tunnel and trench? Thanks.
Thank you very much. Adrian?
Can we actually, basically, can we clear up what's happening at the December 17th council meeting?
So for December 17th, on this particular, responding to this motion, you mean Councilmember Fine?
I think, I think in general. One, how will this motion be folded into what's already anticipated? Just if you could just give us a brief of what's going to happen at the December 17th council meeting.
So the main things we want to do on December 17th with the full council is get them up to speed on where we are in our progress of evaluating the alternatives. We've had a number of rail meetings, CAP meetings, TAC meetings, so there's that, that part of the meeting. Then responding to the, to the motion specifically, what I heard is between now and then, we would look at what it would take, both scope and cost, to evaluate an alternative of freight on the surface and passenger underground in a tunnel.
Okay. So you would give kind of an update of the schedule, what we've been working on, the seven or eight options we're currently doing deep dives on, and then additionally, a quick workup of what this tunnel and freight on the surface would look like, if we wanted to go, go ahead with that?
What it would cost and the timeline to do it, yes.
Following what Councilmember Fine said, the schedule, I thought that it's also looking at South Palo Alto's options, what the rail committee recommends, and also eliminate, eliminating some of the options. Is that going to be on the agenda as well?
It could be. So there'll be an opportunity for action on the alternatives that remain on the, on the table. So at that meeting, if there is enough information that the council, which includes the rail committee, feels like one of the alternatives, say, in South Palo Alto, the three alternatives we're looking at, one or more are not viable anymore, then that motion can be made so we can stop studying that and narrow the alternatives further.
And...
Well, yeah, so there was a motion not at the la, not from the continued, the last November 14th meeting, but the one that was previous to that, where, yes, October, where we, we did have a motion to eliminate the, the recommendation of, to council to eliminate the viaduct. So is that going to be something that's going to go on the agenda? Or is that...
As I recall, the, the motion didn't actually carry to, to eliminate that option, but it was postponed until further analysis was done. So that would happen in December. You would have more information. We would have the community meeting at that point, and then the council may decide that an alternative may need to come off the table.
Or other, further direction. You know, short of taking, eliminating an alternative, we want to tee up the opportunity for the council as a whole to give us further direction.
I would like for them to hear, you know, the, the options and the alternatives, and what a viaduct would do and, and all of that. But at the end of the day, I mean, I think that's what we're trying to do, right? To, to lessen the number of...
Reduce the number of options, yes.
Yeah, options. And this is about South Palo Alto, so we kind of need to focus on what we're going to be studying on, studying, and start... So we kind of need to focus on what we're going to be studying on, studying, and start chipping away, right?
Yes, that is correct. And we also hope to bring additional information regarding the Palo Alto Avenue and north end of town. And again, set that out for further direction from council.
And that's also for December meeting?
Yes.
Okay. And one last thing. Could you please, I totally understand when we, that we do need the materials ahead of time in order to review and so forth. So not just for our meeting here at the rail, so that we have the materials ahead of time, but also, you know, for the CAP Committee, their time, their time is very limited. They have that two-hour block, right? And so if they can prepare for the meeting rather than react at the meeting, it would be super helpful for them to have, so that they can kind of have a more informed voice at that point. Can that be done?
We certainly can try and do that. We are on a tight schedule. The way the CAP meeting is working, and there's some advantage to this, they're getting the really early first view of a lot of the material that sometimes staff is getting, not that much earlier than, than the CAPs. For the last couple of meetings, it's been, it's not been possible to get the information out in advance, but to the extent we can do that, we certainly will endeavor to.
Well, I truly, truly will appreciate if you try.
I think we get that message and we'll do everything we can.
Adrian?
Yes. One last thing. If staff could also reach out to the council members who are not recused but not on this committee, and maybe meet with them beforehand and just try to prep them a little bit, I think that'd be helpful. Thank you.
All right. If there's no other discussion, let's vote on the motion. All in favor? Aye? Passes unanimously. Excellent. Very good. Let's move on to update on community advisory panel. Well, we've had some discussion about this. Any other, we've been weaving it into our earlier discussions, but any other comments about this?
Yes. Good afternoon. I'm Milet Litzinger from AECOM. And I was just going to highlight some of the materials that we've covered in the CAP that haven't previously been covered. We have met with the CAP on, I had our fourth meeting in early November. And the CAP continues to be a valuable resource to us to develop a project and prepare for not only Rail Committee but also the community meetings. And as Ed mentioned, we are kind of in a rhythm where we, you know, CAP gets the first draft, we refine it, you guys get kind of the second draft at Rail Committee, and then we're ready to go prime time at the community meetings. So, and then, you know, it's true, our agendas are jam-packed. There's a lot of material to cover, and we appreciate everyone's time and dedication that they've spent because we have, we do have better deliverables because of their input. So some of the items that were discussed at the CAP meeting, which were the alternatives, and briefly the work plan, which we've already gone over today. Another agenda item that we typically talk about is the community conversation. So that's an opportunity for the design team to report on the agencies they've met with, and I believe Rob's going to report more on the inter-agency meetings that we've had. And then also, the CAP members get an opportunity to tell us who they've spoken to and what they've heard. So an example of that, many of them have had meetings with Rotary, neighborhood groups, and local schools. And all that input is, gets the word out about the project and really helps us stay in front of the community. Some of the other topics outreach-wise that we've discussed is the frequently asked questions. We do have a website that is for the project where we do have frequently asked questions. We have posted an original post of several questions, and we're trying to do that monthly to send an update of a group of questions at a time, but then at the same time, keeping a overall list of all the questions answered. The other feedback that we got from the CAP was that it was important that we get the word out about the two upcoming community meetings. So there was a mailing that was prepared. This is a really good example of an evolution of a deliverable. We brought in October a draft of the mailer that we intended to send out. We got a lot of feedback from the CAP. It was reformatted and went out in a much more succinct way. One of the highlights of that is not only talking about the, what will specifically be discussed at the November and the January meeting, but then also highlighting what the evaluation criteria is that was documented by city and council so they can have that in mind. So I think that's it for information that you haven't already heard between the last Rail Committee meeting and this continuation of it today.
Okay. We do have one speaker on this, so I'll just go to them. Nadia Knack. Welcome back.
Thanks. So I just wanted to remind the committee, the CAP has been directed that we are not allowed to make consensus recommendations. So we are allowed to push information out and give feedback in the meetings, but we're not necessarily allowed to vote on issues. That said, there was robust discussion around the viaduct option and keeping the viaduct option in the range of alternatives, because everybody seemed very concerned about the potentially fatal flaw of the creeks related to the trench. And so if you take out the viaduct and you take out the trench, that only leaves a hybrid. And it was sort of, it was consternation about whether that would be adequate. So I just wanted to report that. I don't really, perhaps at the December 17th meeting, there's going to be some sort of report that sort of identifies all these recommendations specifically that were made by the CAP. But currently, there isn't really a way for the things that are said in these CAP meetings to come in detail to you guys, the Rail Committee. So I don't know if we could think about a better way to be able to summarize those points. Like, I don't think you guys are getting summaries of the CAP meetings that talk about the things that were suggested and make you guys think a little bit more about what's happening. So I would just throw that out there. The other thing that there seemed to be a lot of consensus about, although I can't say there was a consensus recommendation because we're not allowed to do that, is that, looking at the, expanding the evaluation criteria. So for example, today, we talked about maintenance costs, right? There's a lot of other things that are not in the criteria that were approved in September of 2017. And I know that if you've been on this committee long enough, or have attended enough of these meetings, you know that that is a source of consternation about what that criteria says and how we should be looking at it. I'm a little concerned to hear that we might be eliminating anything at the December meeting, mostly because I don't think we have all the data. And certainly, if you decide to add in another alternative, we might have something else that we need to look at. But then also because you may choose as a city council to have a different, you may decide differently if you have one answer for South Palo Alto and one for the north. If the costs come out very imbalanced, for example, you know, you may decide that you are going to address those differently. And it's impossible to know that if you eliminate things early on before you sort of have a better cohesive understanding of what you're going to do across the four. Thanks.
Thank you. I'm just curious if staff or consultants have any comments further about this?
Yes. On our website, we do have a CAP tab, and for each of those, the agenda, all the materials, and a meeting summary for each of those meetings is posted. So you could find that information there. As far as the discussion with the evaluation criteria, we are, we did look at, we kept the criteria in that table that you had seen at the previous meeting, the colored table to be the adopted criteria, where we're trying to capture things that are outside of that, like maintenance cost and impacts to creek. So we're trying to highlight those and pros and cons for each alternative, so they are noted as part of the, you know, the differentiators between each of the alternatives.
Okay. And also, just kind of second what Councilmember Koo said earlier, which is, I think that it's helpful for anybody, whether it's this committee, the city council, for the CAP, to have materials as far in advance as possible. If that's 24 hours or 12 hours, that's better than getting it at places. And if it's, you know, 48 hours, that's better than 12. And if it's a week, that's better than 48 hours. But I think that it is really important that we get materials at least somewhat before meetings. We'll be more prepared on not just this committee, but I think the same is true for the CAP. They'll be, we'll all be more able to be helpful in responding to what staff and consultants are bringing us. But I do appreciate that it is a dynamic environment, but I do want to encourage that. Any other comments or questions about this? Okay. Moving on then, inter-agency activities.
Thank you, Chair Walbach. I can begin here. First thing I'd like to say is there is, there is an "At Places" memo here. Sorry you received that today. We just received it yesterday from Townsend Public Affairs. You remember at the November 14th meeting, we had the legislature lobbyist here, Nicolau De Luca. Unfortunately, we didn't get to his item. We did ask him to come back today, and unfortunately, he's not available either today or December 17th, so we're going to have to look at another date to have him come back. But in the meantime, he did put together a memo, us through some initial thinking around the types of education we might need to think about doing as part of a lobbying strategy, and then a strategy for who to meet with as we start to seek funding from different places. So that's a three-page memo that you have, and we'll agendize this for a time in the future, and the public should have access to that memo. And we will make sure that it's posted online as well for the, for the public. In the packet, what we did include were a few letters that related to sort of inter-agency activity. The October 25th letter that was signed by Chair Walbach, really from the committee and council, asking for some clarification on constraints and criteria that Caltrain has, and what, largely what is the flexibility for getting modifications to those constraints, given the different alternatives that we're looking at. Also in there is a letter from the Santa Clara Valley Water District. This is in response to a meeting that the team had with them to go over the alternatives that we are analyzing. And hopefully you find that informative. If you have questions, certainly we're here to answer those. And then there was a request to, by another council member, but we included here, was a June 28, 2017 city letter to Union Pacific, also related to grade separation. The last thing I'd like to mention, and Mr. Shakata might want to add to this, there is also a meeting later this week on the 29th, the Local Policymakers Group, where they'll be discussing the business plan update for Caltrain and different service scenario concepts.
Yeah, perhaps, let me pick it up. At that point, the activity around Caltrain's business plan is definitely getting more substantive. At this point, you may have seen an article, I think it was in Silicon Valley Business Journal, or it may have been elsewhere, again, picking up with outreach that Caltrain or JPB staff is doing regarding the ongoing work. Up until this point, it's been largely conceptual, but it's now starting to get specific. And as a part of the packet that has been distributed and posted on Caltrain's Calmod website, talk about difficulty navigating websites or finding information, you do need to find, I think it's calmod.com, that they use as the primary landing page for information on the Caltrain business plan. But in any case, the Local Policymaker Group will receive a very detailed presentation that is now posted on their website, indicating a variety of scenarios for enhanced services in order to serve increased demand along the Caltrain line. Notable for Palo Alto, we do see in their graphics the concept of a passing tracks in the California Avenue Station area, which in early conversations with Caltrain staff, we requested additional information on exactly what type of width of right-of-way would be necessary in order to accommodate that. And that request is still pending with Caltrain. So the concept of passing tracks in Palo Alto is certainly something we would want to discuss in more detail. And quite frankly, told them that it might be premature for them to be suggesting that if they hadn't done enough homework to know what the implications of that might be for right-of-way needs. But that said, that is part of the presentation that they'll be making later this week. It's obviously now also part of the public discussion that they, Caltrain, is using in the context, again, of what type of service improvements would be necessary in order to meet the demands that they are beginning to forecast or can anticipate along the Caltrain line. So I think notable simply to highlight that, kind of a heads-up for the committee, council and the community, that we do know that that is now being discussed and will be discussed in upcoming meetings. One other just note on the inter-agency activities heading, we are now beginning to have more substantive discussions with VTA, as I noted earlier, on the VTA's approach to Measure B implementation. As the committee recalls, but for perhaps public information, folks who haven't been tracking this, Measure B has a category of funds for Caltrain grade separations that are specifically targeted for the cities of Palo Alto, Mountain View, and Sunnyvale. And so those discussions are beginning. At this point, VTA staff has suggested a planning effort and development of an implementation plan that would be used to set some priorities among those projects. We have given some feedback that we didn't think that that was necessarily a good use of funds at this point, and that VTA's focus could be better served by identifying how they can help generate more money for all of the grade separations, rather than how to divide the funds among the grade separations, as well as how to coordinate the construction activities. And discussions among VTA and with Caltrain also at the table, to some of the earlier comments, that rather than treating the individual grade separations individually, with VTA, we now have a certain critical mass that perhaps VTA can be an effective partner in helping us advocate with Caltrain, that coordinated construction, especially in an electrified Caltrain corridor. And also with their Positive Train Control program presumably coming soon, would also, again, be effort and focus area that VTA could be very helpful going forward. So just, that's a quick snapshot on ongoing discussions. We have really been keeping this at a staff level. The last note, though, in our feedback to VTA and how they could scope their upcoming implementation activities would be to also take on a significant uptick in community engagement among the cities and with the public at large. So I think that gives you the update on our inter-agency activities. Certainly been increasing significantly over the last couple of months.
Very good. We have a couple of public speakers. Nadia Knack, to be followed by Roland de Lebrun.
So just wanted to say yay for the state lobbyist. I'm excited that we have a plan. So I'm happy to see that. You may have seen in the news that the state auditor has audited high-speed rail. They are going to be having a joint legislative hearing this Thursday around that issue in Sacramento. I don't know if it'd be possible to have our lobbyists go and take a listen, but it may be a critical meeting that is going to let us know where our new governor is, may be inclined to take this whole thing. And so I would recommend that we look at that. There is going to be immense political pressure building to complete the tunnels into San Francisco. This is because the Transbay Terminal has been completed, but was designed with retail in mind to be able to pay for the construction that all relates to foot traffic, that doesn't happen if they don't have those tunnels. So you may have seen Mark Benioff of Salesforce, who the tower is named after and the station area is named after, is really starting to put some political muscle behind that. What that means for us is that the need for grade separations becomes more urgent because there are more jobs in a half-mile radius around Transbay than there are in all the stations combined, between Fourth and King, all the way down to Gilroy. So the important thing, we heard a little bit about passing tracks. Caltrain is doing this dance right now because they have to work with high-speed rail about guessing for passing tracks. The reason you need passing tracks is because high-speed trains and Caltrain travel at different speeds. And you don't need passing tracks if you don't have high-speed rail, important to note, because otherwise, we would just run a lot of trains the way Bart does. There's three ways to pass: a passing track, a siding, which is that the train pulls over and the fast train then goes through, and then Caltrain would get back on the line, or a station with four tracks. The Caltrain presentation shows potentially a passing area at Cal Ave. We, as a city, are going to have to think about what makes sense for Palo Alto, because actually, our University Avenue area, the station area is, would be four-track, there's space for four tracks there. And the reason that we have to think in Palo Alto about passing tracks is because we want the best Caltrain service in the future. But if we have to assume that high-speed rail is happening, we've got to allow for the fact that there has to be passing tracks, but we have to think about where they are. And there's a question of, do you pass at a station, or do you pass making these long passing track areas? And so regionally, we need to think about, how do we get the best Caltrain service with minimal impact and minimal cost? And high-speed rail is trying to get the most capacity without spending money. They're trying to put it on Caltrain. So it's going to be part of our negotiations. It should certainly be something that we talk about with the lobbyist, but I would love to see that... love to see this as an item that we try to go deeper into on, maybe on a study session, so we can think about what it means, because we have to respond to the Caltrain business plan, and part of our response relates to the service that we want, and therefore, the potential implications of passing tracks. And I'm happy to talk more about it offline, because I know it's very confusing. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Roland Lebrun.
Thank you. Did you reset my Duda?
Yes.
All right. So Calmod, you basically Google Calmod, and that'll get you to the landing page for the Caltrain modernization, and you scroll down the bottom of the right to click on the agendas. And obviously, you cannot have a quorum of you attending, but I strongly recommend that you attend this on Thursday. And unfortunately, I didn't videotape it. Some of this stuff is really, really going to blow your mind out, okay? 12 to 16, 12 to 16 trains an hour, for crying out loud, how the heck is that going to work with our grade separation? Okay? So, I mean, they're getting out of control there, and the problem goes back to what apt to say, when they peer reviewed two years ago, you need the chief engineer. Do you know what? The position is still open on the San Trans website. They don't have a chief engineer. They haven't had one for 10 years. Okay? And they're just running around like chickens with their heads cut off. So please attend that and, and, and start paying attention to all the red flags. Now, the points that Nadia made, Sacramento on Thursday, you'll be happy to know I will be there, and I will be testifying about what's going on in Central Valley and elsewhere. Unfortunately, I cannot lobby for you. Now, downtown extension, as I said, the TGPA is no longer the authority, but what's happening now is BART, and you're going to say, what the heck does BART have to do with this? BART is a managing agency for the Capitol Corridor. And San Francisco have actually figured out that the current proposal on the table is going to make it incredibly difficult to connect the Transbay Terminal to the East Bay. So my guess is this is going to take precedence. Announced on BART's board last week, their initial budget for the study is between $200 and $300 million. I hope that gets your attention. Now, who is going to be driving this? It's not going to be Jim Hahn, that is a gentleman by the name of David Krotowski, who is the chief executive for the Capitol Corridor. And my guess is that their approach from the East Bay into the Transbay Terminal will eventually drive how Caltrain will be approaching the Transbay Terminal from the other end. Oh, and by the way, as I said, they published the SEI yesterday. You may want to read my comments. They are in Appendix A, Part Two, runabout page 40, and then you can see their responses. And happy reading. Thank you.
Thank you. Any comments from colleagues on inter-agency activities?
Just one thing, I'll be at the LPMG meeting, and I'm meeting with these two gentlemen tomorrow morning to go over some of our strategy and questions we need to ask there.
Great, thank you. Lydia? All right, great. Yes, please, go ahead.
I just remembered what I was going to ask. Can we make sure we ask our lobbyists to see if that he can attend on Thursday, and is that something that he does? I think it's important to have him at this meeting here.
I think we can follow up. I am seeing that we are able to listen to the meeting, and unless we want him to testify with a specific request, I'm not sure that being there in person is necessary. So in any case, we'll, we'll ensure that we're tracking. I think one other note, that we did ask Caltrain staff to come and do a presentation on the business plan to Rail Committee, and I think we're, we're trying to work through the schedule on when that will happen.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next steps and future agendas.
So I think we've, we've essentially gone over that. Well, the big news, of course, tomorrow is the community meeting. If you can make it, that would be great. Six to eight, at the Mitchell Park Community Center, in the El Palo Alto Room. And then we have a meeting on December 17th, and that's with the full council. So there's no rail meeting in December, but there is a CAP meeting and a TAC meeting, as we mentioned before. At the December 17th meeting, just to recap, we'll, we'll review the community meeting that we had by then tomorrow. We'll update the full council on the advisory, community advisory panel, technical advisory panel, and the different stakeholder meetings that we've been having. We'll hopefully be able to share and talk a little bit about the downtown Palo Alto Avenue crossing, and the idea of a, maybe a different track, a coordinated area plan of sorts. We'll also, at that meeting, discuss the, the scope and, and cost of studying freight on the surface with a, with a tunnel, and we'll also be looking at the other alternatives, including the hybrid trench and viaduct at Meadow and Charleston. So it'll be a busy agenda.
All right, thank you. And I'll note that this is our final Rail Committee meeting for this calendar year. That means that the Rail Committee will be reconstituted. I don't think I'll be chairing it next year, but I want to say thank you to a lot of members of the public who've come regularly and participated throughout this year, staff, consultant, and of course, colleagues. It's been a tough year in a lot of ways. We are working through tough stuff, but this is really important, and I really appreciate what everybody's contributed, and will continue to contribute in the, the year ahead. So thank you.
I just want to say thank you very much to Councilmember Walbach for chairing the committee and providing everybody an opportunity. I mean, it's a very well-run meeting, and I think the public gets a lot of say in it, and so I really appreciate that, and thank you for all the work that you've done.
Thank you. Appreciate it. All right, this meeting is adjourned.